Good afternoon and welcome to the Pownil Elementary School District Board of Directors Meeting for Wednesday, December 19th. First thing on the agenda, if we will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment? Please round the time. Okay. I guess they're all cursing a shop.
We're all home wrapping presents.
See? Yeah. Okay. Action items. Financial.
Move where you can.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurers' report. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous.
I just want to say that you wanted to know what the amount was. You did see that, right?
Or?
That we put the bus sinking fund into, remember? So now it's the fund balance for the renovation. Remember, we were asking last year.
Oh, right. And what the amount is, yes. Okay, I'm glad you pointed that out because I forgot about that. All right. Second, is the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm. Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any?
Leave of absence?
Leave of absence?
On, yeah. On consent agenda.
Number five.
Number five. I was wondering what the plans are to...
Oh, okay. Well, we'll ask our fearless leader here. The leave of absence for Caitlin Hunt?
That's just through, through Friday. She'll be back the 2nd of January.
Oh, that should have been previous.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Is it, you okay with that, Ted?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm just gonna pass on.
You're gonna abstain?
Abstain, yeah. I wouldn't at the meeting and I don't.
Okay. You can abstain. Okay.
I don't understand the minutes. I can't understand the way Tammy wrote.
That's right. I can't either.
All right. Policy's 5600.
So moved.
Second. I printed the, I printed the law. If anybody wants to read it, I printed it. You know, what the, what the actual law is.
Oh, yes, I'd like to read it.
Okay.
Yep.
And I don't have an objection to it, provided it's not something that you can, no, that, that whole thing is the law. So, but it's, I don't have any objection to it as long as it's not an objective view of what freedom of speech is. Okay? Because lately, it's freedom of speech isn't freedom of speech. Okay? It's, if you agree with it, then you're free to, you know, and it's not the way it should be. And also, I think a kid, any kid in high, up to high school, you gotta watch when you give them freedom of speech. Okay? Because they tend to overdo it. So...
Is that covered in the, in the statute?
Not, not the way the statute's written. No, okay.
Did you want to change, are you saying you want to change it or?
Well, it, it says that you have to, you have to take what the, what the state put down.
Oh, follow what the state...
And the policy just references the state.
Yep. Oh, okay.
Right. And it says you've gotta do it the way the state says it. And, you know, I read it over and I'm not so sure I, I agree with everything in it.
Okay.
Okay? But it's only to warn, so.
Yep.
But I think we should have a discussion about that at some point in time.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, I'll make a note of that. All right, so is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? If, no, I'm sorry, policy 5600, and this one again is just to warn.
Right.
There's no other discussion. Those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Now, 7100, board member education. This one is to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion remains second. Is there any discussion on this one? No. Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Okay. And the other one, I want to make a note that you want to discuss it at some point. Discuss.
It may be a moot point, you know, depending on what happened on the 15th.
Right.
So...
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, last time I was here, I was gonna be traveling to Barry the next day for the State Board meeting, and I think if you've, between my emails or media reports, you'll, you know what the result was. They went forward with their plan and that then, they altered it slightly. So instead of 2020, it'll be 2021 when Arlington and Sandgate join our supervisory union. So it's not a merger in the way that they are merging you with Shasbury, Bennington, and Woodford. They remain an independent school district, but they need to be under a supervisory union. And my understanding of why they're not, it's not a complete merger is because the grade alignment is not equal because they are K through 12 school district. Concerning the consolidation that's gonna take place under Act 46, you received some emails from me about the 15th. We needed to warn, and we received November 30th, the final state plan, disseminated it, and then began our work on it to get, we got the meeting warned last week because it has to be warned for a minimum of 30 days, no more than 45 days. We tried to go with the earlier January date because it gives us more time in case this transitional board wants to change anything in the Articles of Agreement because that vote has to happen by February 28th. Extremely tight timeline. So, let me give you what the best of my understanding is. I sent you all an email today. I don't know if you had time to see it yet. I think it went out kind of late. I'm just, my practice is gonna be as you send me questions, individuals send me questions about the process, I'm gonna email my answers back to everybody so we build a base of knowledge that way rather than me just answering individuals as they, they hit me. So we will all learn together. So, on the 15th, the Secretary of Education is supposed to come down and open this, convene this meeting, or their designee. My conversations with the Agency of Education is, it's going to be a designee, that we will probably not see the Secretary of Education come down. They will call the meeting to order. They will begin a process of asking for nominations from the floor to elect a moderator, a treasurer, and a clerk for the new board. He will take nominations from the floor, the floor will vote, and what they're advising us is to encourage the current treasurers, clerks, and moderators, the four of them, if they're interested in coming and encouraging someone to nominate them. So that, we will be publicizing this meeting more than what you had. We're work, we're gonna work with our, the SVSU Public Information Coordinator to run a, to begin a campaign once we get through the holidays to push this meeting so that, through all, as many outlets as possible because we do want good attendance. One of the questions I was always asked, why are we doing it at the middle school? It's a neutral school. All four of the school districts have ownership of that. I'm not holding it like at the Bennington Fire Station or, which belongs only to Bennington. So I'm trying to be mindful of all four towns. You already all belong to Mount Anthony Union Middle School, so that's, and the SU meets there. It's, it's not picking or selecting any one town of given priority, even though it is in Bennington. We are making sure, making arrangements that an adequate sound system is in place, folding chairs, a table set up for the transitional board. I actually anticipate that there'll be two board meetings that night. The fir, two meetings that night. The organizational meeting, which will be opened by the secretary or their designee. And that designee will also swear in the transitional board, which will be made up of the chair and clerk of both four existing boards. So after the business, the organizational meeting is done, we will, we will warn separately a meeting for the transitional board to begin their work that night. What's some of the things they need to do? They need to set a budget for what their work is going to be between now and July 1st because they may be warning votes. And they need to elect a chair. The board will, just like you do when you have your first organizational meeting in March, elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk of that board. And I'm not saying all this, that'll happen that night. I'm not saying all the other work will happen that night. But they need to decide whether they want to amend the Articles of Agreement or just accept the default Articles of Agreement as written by, by the state. And that decision may really fall upon, you know, what town you're from. The window, like I said, is small because that would have, that would be a ballot vote by all four towns. So that would need to be also warned 30, no, at least 30, no more than 45 days out, which, and it has to happen by the 28th of February, which is a Thursday, which would be an unusual day to, to hold a, an election. So it really would be maybe the 26th of February, which is a Tuesday, which means that that would have to be warned by the 26th of January. Now you know why we really were trying to have that meeting on the 15th rather than Tuesday, the 22nd, because it'd be like almost an impossible window to, to do that. Couple of scenarios that I see, and I can't anticipate them all because I don't know what's gonna happen on the, you know, chaos may reign at the floor meeting and they're, you know, we may not even get nominations. I don't know what to anticipate, you know? But what I will see, say the, the transitional board gets, is in place on the 15th, they swear in, and they take a vote that they do not want to amend the Articles of Agreement. They're fine with the way they are, which is 2-2 and 2, board governance, 2-2 and 2, 2 for every town, hybrid model, which means elected at large with protected seats for each town. In all likelihood, then their next order of business would be to set what the new budget will be for that, for the new Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District. I gotta practice saying that name, okay? That's the name, the working name that they have given this new district. Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District.
That could be changed.
Transitional board can change it. The initial board could change it, and here's the difference of those terms. You hear me use transitional board. That's the chair and clerk of all the existing committees. One of the other works that the transitional board has to complete is getting an election warned for duly elected members of what's known under the law as the initial board. And people will be elected to staggered terms, like somebody, some, and it's all laid out, somebody might only have a one-year term and somebody else might have a three-year term, all designed so that going forward in the next election after this one, there'll be people expiring every year, to, their term, not the people expiring, their term expiring every, every two years. So it'll be a three-year term, but not everybody will, not everyone's term expires at the same time. Typical how your board operates now, but to get there, we have to do this initial board election. That could happen at the regular March Town Meeting Day election if this transitional board moves quickly. If they decide, the transitional board decides, no, and decide means they have to take a vote first to form a study committee to amend, to make recommendations on whether they want to amend the Articles of Agreement, and then they bring that back, and they're supposed to warn a public meeting on that, and then...
Could this get any more convoluted or what?
No, I, and Cindy, and I'm not sitting here telling you that, that I even know everything, but it is convoluted, and I think it's an extremely tight timeline. But if they, if they vote they want to change it, then they need to warn that vote, the board will need to warn that vote, and that vote has to take place by the 28th of February. So they certainly won't be voting on the budget because now they're working on, voting on the makeup of the Governance Board, which means the voters in Pownil, Shasbury, Bennington, and Woodford could be looking, worst-case scenario, at three votes this winter or spring. A February vote for changing in governance, a, a March vote for the MAU budget, and sometime after that for the new combined budget of the Southwest Vermont Elementary, Union Elementary School District. That's, that's a lot to swallow, so. I'm having, I'm having planning meetings almost every day with my staff, particularly Renee, as how this is going to impact us. We're still working on details, like this, this transitional board needs a working budget, and I'm not sure yet where the funding stream comes from that because remember, as the votes went down, we're not getting any transitional aid for this. So, and then, so there's two budgets. There's a budget that's gonna have to be generated, and I don't know where the income source is yet, that I can speak to, with confidence to you about that tonight, for paying for these votes and legal services, to advise the board on those votes, to draft the, the warning for those votes. And then the big work will be taking the four individual elementary budgets and making it one budget so that we can get that warned, so we can, people can see what impact there is on the tax rate and all of that, so.
Does State Board of Education even understand what we're going through? Or they don't care? Uneducated?
I'll let you draw your own conclusions on, I don't want to comment what the board...
It's very, it's so convoluted, and I can't, I'm sitting here listening, and I hope somebody on this board comprehends it because I'm not. Number one, we're gonna go possibly on the 15th, the chair and...
Clerk.
The clerk, well...
What's the repercussion if we don't get this done in the time we need?
Well, the quickest thing to do is leave the Articles of Agreement alone.
Uh-huh.
And just, you know, if the majority of the transition board votes to leave the Articles of Agreement alone, then you would probably immediately go to work on budget.
Budget. That makes more sense. Why do we have to even vote again when the state said 2-2 and 2?
And you have to, well, you may get different views on the transitional board. That's, and a lot, the problem, in my discussion with our school's attorney, the problem is if you open up that Articles of Agreement, you have to decide what you want to open it up for. And there's a lot that could open up, including governance model and...
Oh, yes, we know what they're gonna open it up for.
Right. So that is my caution, and you really don't have a lot of time to do that, you know, and the...
But you know what? Haste makes waste. This is what's bothering me. You're saying we gotta do this, 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 and this. And the end result is not gonna, I know, but this is what you're saying that we have to. I'm not throwing you under the bus, but this is the information you're getting. What bothers me is when you move that fast, haste makes waste. This is not something that we have, should be rushing into because we're talking about the taxpayers. We're, we're, don't even go there, John.
Remember who you vote for.
I will say this about time. So when I brought that point to the, to the State Board of Education, particularly about the speed in which they went about proposing that Arlington and Sandgate join our supervisory union and then voting to put them in there, which, 10, depending how you count, 10 days to two weeks, which is, in my opinion, very quick. So when I expressed that to the State Board, when I went up to Barry, their reply, or at least one of their, one individual replied that, "This has been up discussion for a long time. We may think that, you know, that they're rushing," but, so you knew, they knew, or we should have known that this was coming, was the response. And that's what they'll say, you know?
Yeah, but they gave Arlington, Sandgate, that hasn't been up for discussion for a long time.
No, but they gave him two more years.
They said in the secretary's plan, it was there.
Well, why didn't they, why didn't they give us an idea of what the hell we planned?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That, that as far as Act 46, we've known that this day has been coming for a long time.
Well, Act 46, but not Sandgate and Arlington.
Not Sandgate and, and...
Got nothing to do with the plan.
And I will say to you, you know, the State Board put them there, the State Board could take them away, you know? That's, that's, we have two years to decide how well we can make this merge. But this one is, this elementary district is coming quicker.
So, but the merge, the merge, the way it sits now, they get three seats, they get four seats, actually. They get three in one. They keep their own buses.
They're gonna sit on the board as well.
Well, I don't know if they do. They may, you know, they, you know, we, that all has to be looked at. And one of my discussions with the, the Superintendent of Arlington right now is like, I can't really even meet to discuss this right now. My priority is what's gonna happen January 15th. You know, they're, they're anxious, they want to meet and talk to us and what, you know, what they want to preserve and what's important to them, and I'm...
We lost what was important to us, thanks to the state.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
So...
So, so the current clerk and chair go on this traditional committee?
Mm-hmm.
And when do the people run to get on the real committee?
So either March, if the transitional committee can get that warned fast enough, which I don't see how they can because the window for taking out and getting signatures and all that, so maybe, I, I don't, I don't, it'll be this spring, it obviously has to be, but that's why I, I don't see how this is all gonna happen by Town Meeting Day. I don't see how it can.
I think that, seriously, if anybody's interested in running, take your papers, go get the paperwork now and start putting them in the stores. Because you gotta get them, I'm sure you gotta get 5% of everybody, which is a lot more than the 30. You know, I, if you would, Jim, can you find out how many signatures they're gonna need?
Yeah.
Because in Pownil, it's 30 votes. However, if they're gonna get 5% of, of everybody, it's gonna be a couple of hundred votes, any, a couple of hundred signatures they need?
Really?
Well, I don't know. That's, that's a question you gotta ask.
Yeah, I can't see.
And the time to ask it, Cindy, is ask it now, and not after you get stuff done and they'll say, "Well, this doesn't qualify." You might wanna, somebody might want to contact Cassie and ask her because she, you know, she would know.
We also know that the, the current town clerks are playing a crucial role to this, but we're being advised by the Agency of Education is that on the night of the 15th, we need to have the town clerks present to certify the voters who are coming in, like have the voting list there, who's coming into the floor on the 15th, see, yep, you are a resident of Pownil, you can vote, because the new entity doesn't have a clerk yet to do that, so.
Well, can it be a JP or somebody from the town?
That, that thing that I just told you right now about clerks being there came in today. We, we're getting advisories from the state, like, so this week's advisory on the transition process had that, you know...
Well, that makes sense because when we have an election, each town does, the town clerk is the one that verifies that they are a resident of that town.
Yep, and they could be...
So that makes sense. I understand that being...
So as far as whether we can do, have a substitute if the town clerk isn't available?
We have an assistant town clerk.
Yeah, so.
It goes right to the assistant.
That was in today, this morning's advisory from Donna Russo Savage that, you know...
Well, I personally think we're, we're pushing. We are pushing. Like I said...
We're not pushing. It's the state that's pushing, Cindy.
I know.
You know.
Wrong statement.
So, Jim, can I just, I'm still confused about if your, if your term is up in March?
You'll be, so this board will still have work to do, so you still need, need to maintain enough members that you have quorum and can work. So I think there's three members here whose term is up because somebody is filling out somebody else's term because I, I looked at all the...
There's always two, one-year, and one, three-year.
Right. So there's two up this year in a, that, that would be the normal cycle, but somebody's filling in somebody's term, maybe, I don't know.
Todd, it is Todd.
I got, yeah. So there's three seats that are up. So somebody, you, I encourage you to run again because this board will still work in April and May.
Yeah, we're gonna run out the door and down the road.
You know, I mean...
And then they just run until the end of June.
End of June, and we're being told that you may have to meet in July to, you know, you may have a warrant that still needs to be signed, or you may need to receive something like your audit report because it's your audit report, not the new one or...
And then theoretically, this board dissolves.
Technically, your work, technically it dissolves June 30th. Your ability to spend money expires on that time, and you're, you're, you don't exist.
And then you're still part of the transition board? Or you had to be elected in March?
By that date, the initial board will be elected. So the, the transitional board is made up of the clerk and chair of this board, and...
So the tradition, the transitional board meeting's work is done in March?
Is, well, or as soon as they hold an election to elect the initial board members. So the transitional board is there to get the work done, to get, to get the initial board members elected and then they take over.
So we actually need three boards. We need our board to go through until June.
Yep.
And then we need Cindy and me, because I'm the clerk, to go on the tradition, transitional.
Yep.
And then we need to get...
Someone to run for the, the real one.
The original, the permanent one.
Yeah, initial board, they, they determine.
So if that...
You need two people, right? To run for the...
Two people from Pownil.
And how long is that term for, the same?
Well, some, I, I don't have to break down with me here. I think somebody from Pownil gets elected to a one-year term and somebody else is getting elected to a three-year term.
Right. I was just gonna say, each town will have a three-year and a one-year.
And I think somebody might actually have a two-year term so that they, yeah, so that they, every year there'll be, I think, three or two members, two members, term expires and every three years there'll be a complete flip of the board. So the, there is a, in the, in the, the documents we received from the Agency of Education, there is a schedule of seats by town, who gets a one-year, I, I think they did it by law, who gets a one-year seat, who gets a three-year seat, who gets a two-year seat, and so that the, going forward, it expires staggered.
Can you send that to us?
I can.
Yeah.
What, how many members are on the new board?
Well, hopefully, the...
Eight. Under the, under the default Articles of Agreement, every town gets two, just like the transitional board, so eight.
That's a whole new amount to do all that work.
Yeah. And so Todd, you bring up the, the, John, when you brought up that Arlington's gonna get three seats on the SU board and one. So we reminded, and I sent off all the documents to the Agency of Education, in February of 2013, the SU petitioned the State Board to exercise their rights, the State Board's rights, to amend and allow Mount Anthony, Mount, allow the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union to operate with two and an alternate. Because the law says every operating school district gets three seats and every non-operating gets one seat on an SU. So the State Board's only option with Arlington was to give them three seats and to give Sandgate one because they weren't part of that vote in, in February of 2013. So we've sent a letter...
But if they're joining us, when you're in Rome, you do as a Roman do.
So we, well, the State Board has to do that again. So they have to amend what happened on 2013.
Right.
So we sent off a letter to the State Board to do that.
We're still waiting.
Yes. But in the meantime, we realized, wait a minute, the SU is going to change.
Yeah.
Because the, right now, you have two seats on the SU board, Shasbury has two seats, Woodford has one, but the new entity would get three seats because you're not the new, the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District is not part of that February 2013 agreement. You're a new district. The law only allows you to have either three or one. So this element, the way I see it, and this is what we've notified the state with now is, so Arlington would have three, you would have three, Mount Anthony would have two, and Sandgate would have one, and North Bennington would have one, the two non-operating, the operating district under the law and the operating district under the amendment to the law, Mount Anthony would have two. So I think the whole thing, I think what could happen, I see, I know, as I say this, as I sit here and sit, and they're like, am I explaining this so?
But it, but it makes sense if they're gonna have three from the new elementary board.
Right. So I think what will happen is that maybe that amendment will be changed so that maybe Mount Anthony gets three, this elementary district gets three, Arlington gets three, and...
It should be an odd number.
Well, you'd have, you'd have, well, that would be, you'd have 11 then because North Benning would still get one as a non-operating, Sandgate would get one, so that would be a board of 11, which is... be a board of 11, which is, and what you have now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be my guess, but we're gonna have to work through a few State Board meetings to get them to take the vote to amend that again.
That makes more sense.
Sorry for the, but like, email me your questions, and like I said, I will, I will, I will email my best answer to everyone, so we all share it that way, and we, you're right, I heard you talking about, we will be promoting that meeting on the 13th as much as, as we can.
On the 15th?
15th.
15th, now, how, look, I'm...
Are you gonna get ahold of the town clerk?
Yes, yeah, Renee is, is working on that, but feel free to let them know, we need them there on the 15th, and anyone who's interested in running for either the moderator, the treasurer, or the clerk...
Are they being notified?
Yeah, they'll be, yeah, they'll all be notified, yeah.
Who's the moderator now, Timmy Holbrook?
Yeah, he really needs to... So can anybody from the public, like...
Anybody can, and the nominations will come from the floor, you know, you could sit there...
People from the public should come.
Yeah, yeah.
They're the ones that have got to vote, because it can't be the, the board.
Well, I mean, like our treasurer, she wanted to...
And then, and then once the board is up and operating, you know, that, once the initial board's up and operating, you know, you go through the process just like you do now, if you ever want to change that or re-advertize for that, you know, the clerk, treasurer, and moderator are not forever, you know?
Yeah.
And the board also has to decide what they're gonna pay them to, what the fee will be.
Get enough.
Lot more work, lot more...
Get enough.
Huh?
Get enough.
Oh, I know, yeah, not what we're doing now, not for the work.
Tangerine is good.
Um, sorry, what was I gonna say? It slipped me, I don't know how you do it, because I'm losing sleep.
I do it by have some great people who assist me, so.
That was nice.
Yeah.
All right, I'll conclude with happy holidays, everyone.
Well, thank you. All right.
Merry Christmas.
Good stuff.
Well, my report is nothing like Jim's, honestly.
Oh, come on.
First of all, I just wanna invite the board tomorrow, we do have our holiday meal here at school, so that's another additional 100 people coming in and out of our school downstairs, and it's just a good time, like the kids, there's lots of smiles, some kids, of course, are disappointed because their parents can't join, or grandparents can't join, so if a board member wanted to come and sit with a group of students, that would be great. Other good news, the drama club are getting...
What time is that tomorrow?
It's staggered from like 11:45 to 1:30. Good news, our drama club is getting ready for our spring musical, and they have announced they're gonna be performing Aladdin.
Oh, wow, good.
So the kids are really excited about that, so the signups are going on now, and then that'll be part of the next after-school session. Other than that, my report is very simple, happy holidays.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's see, all I have, and I haven't even marked it yet, in January, the 16th, the day after that lovely meeting, would be Pownell's. Oh, I know, the question just came back to me, Jim. We, we are now working on our, our Pownell budget?
Yes.
As usual, just moved along as...
Yes, and basically, you'll be handing that, once the transitional board is in place, all four boards will hand over the work they have on their budget, and then the transitional's board work will be to combine those budgets. It'll be that simple.
Yeah, right.
It's quite the adjective. A question was brought up about our glee Brent. Nobody understood what the glee Brent is. We've been paying, we've been collecting, we collect the glee Brent from the town, I do believe. Let me go understand this, this has been going back to the, a long, long time.
Been going back since the charter, and glee originally...
Well, it's the land that this...
Well, originally, what happened was, towns didn't have money to pay people, so what they did was, they'd try to get a pastor for a church, and they'd give him land, and he rented the land, glee rent, glee rent, to people for X amount of dollars per year. Arlington's, a lot of the places up and down Route 7 in Arlington are still glee lots. People buy them, they live there, but technically, they don't own them.
Right, we have, we still have them.
Yeah, we do, and the church owns them, and it's, the glee rent's like 10 cents a year.
Yes.
I mean, it's ridiculous, but it's, it's a matter of fact.
It's historic.
Yeah, but, but they did it for schools, and they did it for churches, to get, to get teachers and get pastors in there.
I think Renee was asking about that.
So, well, we are doing title searches of all properties, so, because we want to be sure in this merger, who owns the, the asset, so we're doing title searches of all.
We gave away the ball field just in time.
You still got time if there's anything else, but...
Oh, yeah, there is, we got a couple buses, we're trying to get to take the town takeover.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I'm glad you don't. All right, so, scheduled for our next board meeting, I had it written down, would be the 16th at 5:30, and we'll take it from there.
Take what?
Whatever we want.
Well, that's gonna, that's gonna depend on what happened the night before, right?
Right, yes, yes, even if there isn't night before, okay? All right, is there any other board, well, what we have for FYI is the budget status report, the student enrollment, and the internal finance control documents, that's your FYI, and if there isn't any other business to come before the board...
I just wanted one thing, we floated the idea at the last meeting about potential improvements to the building, do we want to move on that?
Um...
We have the money in the fund.
Yes, yes, well...
So, we, Pownell, can make decisions with this money. Now, my understanding is that money will still be earmarked for Pownell, but it will not be Pownell, it won't be all Pownell.
Right, only two Pownell people will be voting on how you spend that.
On how we spend it. I, I urge the board to get a list of renovation projects for this building, and get them started.
The only problem with that is, they don't do a whole lot in the wintertime, Kevin is looking at...
Yeah, but if you earmark it...
Okay, we can ask...
Could you ask Kevin to come to the next meeting?
Do you know what, the, what's the, a balance on that account?
Yes.
It's 187...
187, 190.
199, 1964.
I'm sure Kevin and Todd could put, and Renee could help put a list together of what projects they have in mind, and what is a reasonable expectation on whether you can get it done by the 30th of June.
Or if it's under contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, once it's under contract. The other thing that we were talking about is the dentist, the tennis court outside?
Yes, we want to get that, yes.
The tennis court and...
The basketball court.
The basketball court.
Those are the things your town uses, too?
Yes, yes.
This is a community area, so...
It's definitely from the school and the town.
Playground.
I don't know what's needs on the playground, but, yeah.
I don't know, I think...
Well, we definitely, we talked about the tennis courts and basketball courts for a long while, so I think that's...
It's important.
Yeah.
And there's even a possibility of getting a grant, I don't know, maybe Kevin can look into it.
Yeah.
And he can actually be in touch with Michael, the town administrator, because part of that is the town, town and school both, we, we share it. I think that was any, that was all of, that we had said, but yeah, we'll have Kevin take a look at, or, yeah, Kevin, take a look at it and see what we can do between now and June. But I did ask Renee, and that money was secured for Pownell, so...
And our furnace is all set?
That's underway, I believe, right?
Our furnace and boiler is all set, right?
Yes, yeah, we voted on that, that's all.
And there wasn't anything to do with the roof, the roof has all been taken care of?
Yep, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
You see, big things like the roof, I'm not concerned too much about, because once we all become one, guess what?
They're gonna be paying this year.
They're, they're gonna be helping us put it on, and it won't be four million.
All voting it down.
Right, right.
Right.
No, they, we, no, I can't see that happening. No, I can't see that happening either. All right, so...
Are you gonna vote, are you gonna vote to, to help anytime?
Santa Claus is not coming to your house, Jim.
He won't be coming anyway.
Wish everybody here a happy holiday, including you, Michael.
Merry Christmas.
And if there's no other business to come before the board, blank to tan motion, did we have that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.